Seven years old for like, say twenty thousand. It was somewhere between twenty seven.
Mic check one. Mic check two. Mic check three. Mic check four. Mic check five. Mic check.
Check, 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 Kalu.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. We're going to go on and get started. We'll start out with introductions.
Kristy Rischel, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Hamilton County Commissioner Alicia Reese.
Jeff Alito, County Administrator.
Patrick Dressing, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney.
Stephanie Sumro Dumas, Commissioner. And I'd like to make a motion to excuse President Drehouse.
Second.
Commissioner Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you. We have quite a few things on our agenda, but before we start, normally on Thursdays, we have silent prayer, but prayer is always in order. And I would just ask that we have a silent prayer for our former President Joe Biden and also for this county as we go through the things that we are going through right now. Just a moment of silence, please. Amen, thank you. First item on the agenda is enterprise zone agreement. If you will please come forward. Michael Aloy, you're not coming up? Oh, okay, alrighty.
New face today. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Michael Witten. As you mentioned, I'm from the Hamilton County Economic Development Office. And today, we have the item for your consideration, an enterprise zone agreement with Monti Incorporated in the Village of Evendale. And...
That's my presentation.
There we go. Alright, so a little bit about the... Well, before I begin, let me just say that we have David Elmer, the Village Administrator here to voice his support for the project. And we also have a few representatives from Monti here in case there's any specific project-related questions. They're happy to answer those for you. So a little overview here. Monti has recently purchased the former GE Aerospace building in the AeroHub development in Evendale. Their intention is to demolish this building so that it can construct a brand-new, state-of-the-art, 50,000-square-foot manufacturing facility. This proposed project involves the establishment of a copper manufacturing facility that will advance its precision and efficiency in the production of critical components for Monti's operations. It is important that I note that for this project to proceed, it does involve the relocation of roughly 45 full-time positions from its existing Cincinnati facility in Paddock Hills, although that facility currently maintains roughly 292 employees. And the company is committed to supporting operations at that facility in the long term. So here we have just a concept plan for what the building could look like. I have a couple photos of this, just to give you a sense of scale, a different design. And here's a site plan. As you can see, there's the label "Building Phase One." While there is no current commitment or timetable on this, there is room on the site to expand should the project be successful. Now, a little bit of the impact details here. So we're looking at a really wonderful project. Roughly $16.5 million in total new investment, $12 million or roughly in new construction of that state-of-the-art facility. We're looking at 45 full-time positions that would have otherwise been relocated, being retained in Hamilton County, in addition to 55 new permanent full-time positions created in Evendale on top of that. So there'll be 55 net new positions created for Hamilton County. And it keeps a wonderful company here, of course. This will result in new permanent annual payroll of approximately $6 million. And these are high-paying positions, roughly $60,000 per position on average. Given the scope of this project and the benefit that we believe it will have in one of our local communities, we are recommending an abatement of 75% for eight years to support the project. The Village of Evendale has already approved a resolution in support of the incentive. And given the relocation aspect of this project, we went through the standard procedure of obtaining a relocation waiver from the Ohio Department of Development. As you can see, this was approved on March 6th. And the City of Cincinnati has, of course, been properly notified and has not expressed any objection to the project as well. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them or direct them to the company. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. I'll let you go first, Commissioner Reese.
Yes, can you go over one more time? What is the, what is the ask in terms of...
Yes, it's 75% for a term of eight years.
And then what is the employment? Is this local employment we anticipate or...
Correct. So right now, they maintain a facility in Cincinnati, has roughly 300 employees. They'll be relocating 45 or so of them to the site in Evendale and then creating 55 new employees on top of that as well. So the net new growth will be 55 in the county.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple comments. I think the tax abatement, 75% eight years, is reasonable. I want to ask a question about the expansion element of it. You say you're able to expand if you need to. Is this entire area yours or what part of the map?
That might be a question.
So when you say expansion...
Well, in terms of growth of our company, revenue growth year-over-year has been 55%. We are running out of room in our current facility in Bon Hill. So that's why we're needing this additional facility in Evendale. The first phase would be a 50,000-square-foot building with the ability to add up to 130,000 square-foot manufacturing.
Okay, so as I look at this map, my question specifically is, do you own this whole area?
Yes.
Okay, so the possibility of all of that for manufacturing. Okay, very good, thank you. I have a...
I have one more. Could I ask Kirk to show real quick? I just want to make sure on this, because lots of companies... First of all, thank you for expanding, because a lot of companies are downsizing. But I just wanted to make sure that you're in Bon Hill, you're going to take 45 of those jobs moving to Evendale. I just want to make sure...
I just want to make sure we're not doing something that down the road you will end up closing Bond Hill. You will not...
No, that is not our intention. We plan to move machinery, add new machinery to the Evendale facility to expand our capabilities that we offer to our customers. And that will in turn give us more room to grow at our current Bond Hill facility.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks. Uh-huh. So next steps.
Yes. I believe we are working to get the approve... Well, the approval vote on your agenda on June 5th, if I remember correctly. And then from there, we would send that in from... Depending on how that vote goes, we would send any approval up to the state as part of their processing.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Next order of business is Generosity 513 update.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
My name's David Visman. I'm with 3CDC. I'm the Vice President of Operations. And my colleague Marissa Reed is here with me, who's the Director of Operations and Outreach. I don't know if the presentation pulled up. Again, thank you for the opportunity to let us come back and talk a little bit more in detail on outreach, which is our Generosity 513 program. We were here at a previous meeting talking about the Downtown Improvement District. We wanted to provide a little bit of background before we got into the Generosity 513 program specifically. You know, 3CDC provides services for Downtown Cincinnati Improvement District and Over the Rhine Special Improvement Districts. Those kind of three key things that we do services there are beautification, ambassadors, which hopefully you guys are seeing every day as you're walking through, and then our Generosity 513 program, which is outreach, which we're going to spend our time on today. Really, we merged with DCI in 2019 and that's when we took on the Special Improvement District downtown. Since we merged, we saw the issue with homelessness growing. We heard from stakeholders consistently about that same problem, which we included some stats in here of, you know, we're receiving calls and communications pretty consistently from those downtown stakeholders of, you know, what is the biggest issue from them, whether it be cleanliness or, you know, day-to-day outreach and homelessness and panhandling, which has always been a very big issue. As we've continued to grow within our budget, we've focused on really increasing the amount of outreach staff, which is we've gone from three to seven outreach staff, which we'll go through in a little more detail here coming up, and increased our budget by 200% over that time period. Just to answer a couple of questions, too, that came up when we met previously. You know, this is the overall DCI budget, Downtown Cincinnati Incorporated. Of that budget, we spend, you know, roughly $700,000 on outreach annually. That again is a 200% increase from, you know, when we started the program back in 2019. We do that through both, you know, reallocating funds from the Special Improvement District that previously had gone into personnel and other items. Those savings that were part of a merger with 3CDC and DCI, we were able to reallocate back up into outreach and safe and clean. In addition to that, we go out and try to get additional outreach funding, both from the city, county, and private funding. You know, one of the questions that came up the last time we met was, Hamilton County, what was your investment in this? The Improvement District specifically, so the tax that is implemented through the Improvement District, the county pays $125,000 into that on an annual basis right now. And then above and beyond that, we go back to the Hamilton County Mental Health Board to contribute to our outreach program. So that's additional funding that we get to be able to help expand what would be possible from that day-to-day Improvement District fund. So I'll turn over to Marissa to go through a little bit more detail on our outreach program specifically. If there's additional questions, we can come back to this as well.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you again for the opportunity to be here. So as David mentioned, we wanted to provide a little bit more information on Generosity 513 specifically and what services are provided as part of this program. So again, Generosity 513 is our program that is aimed at assisting individuals who are experiencing homelessness or panhandling in the downtown area. And these services are provided as part of the Downtown Cincinnati Improvement as well as the Over the Rhine South Special Improvement District. So you can see the service area on the map on this slide. The two components of this program are a street outreach team and a jobs van. We'll go into some additional detail on the services provided as part of those two components. We do have an outreach hotline that is staffed daily. So I want to make sure that that phone number is provided up here on the slide as well. Please call anytime that you see someone who is experiencing homelessness or otherwise struggling and might need some assistance. We also have the Generosity 513 website that we want to draw your attention to that has some additional information on not only this program but other resources that are provided across the county. So the Street Outreach Program, this is contracted through Greater Cincinnati Behavioral Health Services. You can see one of our outreach workers, Stephanie, here in the photo on Court Street. We also have Laura Allen is in the room behind me here. She is our Generosity 513 Outreach Supervisor. So she oversees the team. She's also out there every day engaging with clients who are experiencing homelessness as well. So these outreach workers can provide assistance to anyone who is struggling or experiencing homelessness within that geographic area on the previous slide. So it doesn't matter the individual's situation. They will engage with them, try to understand their situation and get them connected to housing and other services. We have four full-time outreach workers that are deployed daily. So seven days a week, we have an outreach worker that is available to answer that hotline and respond to individuals who could use some assistance. Then we add a seasonal outreach worker around the spring through the fall to help with the influx of clients that we usually see. This slide just gives you an idea of the types of services and resources that we will connect individuals with. So we've bolded some of those at the top because this is kind of a long list. So the ones at the top are the ones that the outreach workers really focus on. So of course, really trying hard to get individuals connected to housing and shelter first. And then once they're in shelter of some sort, trying to connect them with the other resources that they may need as well. So we also focus on medical needs, mental health treatment, as well as substance use treatment. But there's also a lot of effort that goes into connecting individuals with income and benefits, education if they would like it, ultimately some sort of employment. Also, if they engage with youth or veterans, connecting with existing organizations that provide services for those populations as well, down to things like directly providing clothing and connecting to organizations that will provide additional as well, snacks and meals and things like that. So the kind of basic day-to-day things that individuals may need, but also the longer-term services that may provide them with assistance to stabilize as well. So within the past couple of years, we've added to this program what we call the Expanded Outreach Program. So what we saw after several years of operating Generosity 513 is that there was a small group of individuals, about 15 to 20 people, that were really the highest need and often chronically homeless individuals that were taking up a disproportionate amount of time for the outreach workers. So a lot of the calls to the outreach hotline, a lot of the visibility in certain areas. So a lot of the time of the outreach workers was spent on a small population of clients. So and with that, not only the outreach staff time, but a lot of calls to the police, a lot of calls to the fire department and emergency medical services as well. So a lot of resources taken up by these 15 or 20 individuals. So we gathered together the leaders of a number of social service agencies and had a conversation about what could we do to try to improve this? What has worked in the past? So the result of that was the Expanded Outreach Program and that really focuses on these 15 to 20 chronically homeless individuals and provides them with what we call an outreach coordinator, which is kind of a hybrid, street outreach worker, case manager. Each of the outreach coordinators, so we have two as part of this contract, they can be assigned up to 10 individuals and they serve as a case manager for that individual. So they're assigned to that person as they hopefully get housed. Once that person is housed, they stay connected to that individual, making sure that they're connecting with other, whatever other resources or treatment that they may need to help them stabilize within their housing. So something that we saw previous to this program existing is that some of these individuals would get housed. We would have success with them, but they didn't necessarily have the additional support that they needed once they were housed to stay in that housing and continue to be successful. So they would end up back on the street, back downtown and engaging with the outreach workers again. So this program has helped us make sure that as these individuals get housed that are very high need, that they're able to stay in their housing and stabilize in that situation. So we have some of our results as of the end of last week. There are six clients that have been exited from this program so far. Three of those went to a nursing home situation, which was appropriate for them. One of those individuals was housed. Unfortunately, one of the individuals passed away and one has ended up incarcerated. We do have 16 additional clients that are currently participating in this program. Thirteen of those are housed and three have completed their housing assessment, which means they're on the pathway to housing, which I do want to point out is really significant for this population. These are individuals that have really struggled to even complete an assessment to be considered for housing. So for all 16 of them to have completed that assessment and then 13 of those to go on to be housed is a real accomplishment for this team. The next couple of slides, just sharing some numbers related to Generosity 513. So we have the total clients from January 2023 up until April 2025. So you can see 2023 is in the red, we have 2024 in the blue and 2025 in the green. So you can see we kind of have this seasonal fluctuation each year where we see an increase as we get into, you know, spring and the summer. We see those numbers, generally speaking, go back down in about November when the winter shelter opens. But we did see an increase in the total numbers in 2024. And we can attribute that to, you know, nationally, there was an increase in homelessness. There were record highs actually nationally in homelessness, which we are seeing in Cincinnati as well. We've also, July 2023 into August 2023, we saw a pretty significant jump. That is when the Expanded Outreach Program, we hired the first outreach coordinator in July 2023. So we saw the numbers for total clients go up at about that point. What we think happened there is that because we had an outreach coordinator that was engaging with a small group of clients that were taking up a lot of time for the other outreach workers, the outreach workers had some additional free time. So they were able to go engage with individuals that maybe they hadn't been able to speak to before. So. So we are seeing, you know, an increase in the total number of clients. With that, though, we have an increase in 2024, as you can see, in the total number of housing assessments, housing connections and other connections to services. So while we saw an increase in the total number of clients, we also saw an increase in the number of connections that the Generosity 513 team was able to make for those individuals. So there may be more people that they are serving, but there's also more of those people that are getting into housing. The 2025 numbers do appear low. It's just because they're just through the end of April, so they're not representing the full year yet. So we do anticipate being able to meet or exceed our 2024 totals. We wanted to highlight a couple of clients that have been successful as a result of Generosity 513. This is James with his outreach worker, Stephanie. So he was previously chronically homeless. His first episode of homelessness was recorded in 2017. He's an individual who would spend a lot of time in and around the Piatt Park area, around the library, and generally was kind of in and out of shelters for several years. He first started regularly engaging with Generosity 513 a couple of years ago and was finally housed in February of 2025 and is doing well. Another client who we have de-identified for privacy reasons. This was a veteran who was often found panhandling in highly visible locations. So would get a lot of calls about this individual. He was chronically homeless, was first documented homeless by Generosity 513 in June of 2019. With the addition of the Expanded Outreach Program, he was assigned to an outreach coordinator in March 2024 and just three months later was housed and has continued to be successful in his housing. So the other piece of Generosity 513 is the jobs van. The jobs van is an alternative to panhandling. So it is essentially going around and picking up individuals who are panhandling, providing them with day labor. So they have three routes that they go on, three days a week around the downtown area. One in kind of North OTR, one in the West End or Queensgate, and then they also go out under the bridges on Third Street as well. So they pick up 10 to 12 individuals for each day of the week. They pick up litter for a few hours. They go back to City Gospel Mission. They're provided with lunch. They're paid in cash for their work for the day. And then we have the jobs van manager, who's Gerald, right there in the middle. He and the jobs van assistant, they will engage with the individuals, both while they're picking up trash throughout the day, also at lunch at the end of the day, and try to understand what the riders on the jobs van are in need of. So do they need housing? Do they want to get into shelter? Do they need some help with more of a permanent position? So what is their situation and how can the jobs van help them or how can they help connect to other resources? So Gerald does a great job of connecting to resources like the shelter at City Gospel Mission because they're already right there, so it's easy for them to do an intake right there at that moment, but also connecting to a number of partner organizations. This has been a great way to connect with individuals who haven't been ready to speak to an outreach worker perhaps, have some sort of a distrust of the system. And so working on the jobs van has been a great way to bring people in and say, you can make a little bit of cash. We'll provide you with lunch and then try to connect with services in a different way. Again, some results of the jobs van. We have 2023 in the red, 2024 in the green, 2025 in the blue. So we saw some great results in 2024. Again, are anticipating similar results in 2025. We did want to highlight a couple of the ways that we collaborate with other organizations. We recognize that we cannot exist in a silo and that there is a lot of expertise and skills amongst the organizations that provide services for those experiencing homelessness. So we have a monthly operational meeting and that is just with our operators of these programs. We also have the Neighborhood Liaison Unit of the Cincinnati Police Department participate in that meeting. The Hamilton County Quick Response Team has started joining those meetings as well, so we can coordinate on what they're seeing as well. And we just discuss if there are areas of concern, client issues, other operational things as well. We also have a monthly system change meeting and this is to look more broadly at chronic homelessness across Hamilton County. We really dig into data around chronic homelessness, understanding how many individuals are experiencing chronic homelessness, how many are flowing into the system each month and how many are going out of it and why, what are we seeing there and what are barriers that are existing for those individuals and trying to work through some of those barriers in the system. So we have a number of agencies that participate in that meeting as well. Lastly, we have recently started having some meetings about coordinating on safety and outreach in the Court Street area. So we had a meeting with the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office to discuss the new bike patrol, coordinating with the outreach team, as well as the downtown ambassadors. We are also setting up meetings with Kroger and the Police Department to kind of pull all of the stakeholders into this discussion and hopefully have a recurring meeting as we're moving forward to make sure everyone's on the same page and we're kind of covering all of our bases in this area. That's the end of our presentation, but we'd be happy to take questions.
Well, thank you so much. I'm going to pass it over to Commissioner Reese and see if she has any comments or questions.
Yes. Thank you for the presentation. And I know that we have a broader issue and there seems to be so many different people working on this issue. I know it needs to be with people, but as it relates to the investment, is the $125,000, is that what we put in?
$125,000 is the amount that the county pays into the Downtown Cincinnati Improvement District for 2025. Yes.
Okay. What was the money? I thought we had some money that the strategies in homelessness is supposed to be some flexible money from ARPA. What did we do with that? That was supposed... Because I had an issue that a lot of people had and it just seems like we just, it's just getting bigger and bigger. I'm interested in courthouse to Krogers.
Sure.
And I'm interested in seeing, I see your downtown people that are cleaning and ambassadors that got their uniforms on. I see that. What I don't see enough of is from the county to there. So all the, I understand what you're saying. We're going to do bigger and broader. Everybody's doing it. I mean, we've got a million organizations that's taking this on. But I need to see something like Chick-fil-A people that's down here helping somebody. That's what I'm looking for, the iPad, the helping of the people. And basically, we come out of here, I want to feel like we did something. Now, did we put any money to that? He said we were. I mean, I don't know. We haven't seen him in a while. They said he wasn't invited. I don't know.
We, Commissioner, we did do, I know we did some grant funding through strategies for some innovative homelessness solutions.
Yeah, and they said it was 3CDC. But I said, I had asked you, I want to be clear. I've been asking this question 50,000 times. We done had somebody got hit over the head that was one of our employees walk into their car. I'd have come downstairs after voting for whatever. They told me it was millions of dollars. I get on the elevator, I go down and everybody's pushing it off to somebody. I get on the elevator, I go down and everybody's pushing it off to somebody else. Now, the bigger picture, I got it, I want to know from the courthouse to Krogers, where is the person, you told me it was mental health people, they were supposed, then they said they was working with Strategies and then Strategy said they couldn't get the money, it wasn't flexible. Then we voted on some money that was supposed to be flexible. And I apologize, I didn't look at the agenda that you guys were coming today. I would have had that, but I need to know where is the person with the T-shirt on? I see the ambassadors sweeping, I see the ambassadors in their trucks. I do not see anybody doing this work from the courthouse to Kroger. That's all I want to focus on right now, from our country.
And these, these individuals do do this work. No, 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 these individuals do do this work from Kroger to the courthouse. So they do it in a, in a broader area than that. But they do, in fact, I saw one of them sitting with someone on the, on the courthouse planter thing out there a month or two ago. So and.
That's what I want to see that now, I do want to find out about this additional money. I know we pay into a money that we always been doing and we voted on it and we helped with the ambassadors. But what I want to find out is that extra money, did we do any extra money? I thought ARPA, the guy, not you, the Strategies guy, I don't see him, I can't find him. But Commissioner, I don't know, Dumas, if you remember, the Strategy guy came when I asked this question, this is the same question I've been asking for five years. And when he came up here, he said that the money that he gets is got him stranglehealed, but that we had some ARPA money that would allow him to work with, I think, mental health and through three CDC, because I wasn't familiar that y'all were in this business, but he said through three, three CDC. And then I didn't hear nothing else. And every time I keep asking about this, I keep getting the runaround. Where is that money or how much money did we put in that? Because that's different than this annual thing that we do or so many years that we do with you.
Yeah, so there was money that was given to Strategies for some innovative homelessness programs, including shelter diversion and things of that nature. This is the program that he referenced when he was here, though, that he was working with Greater Cincinnati Behavioral Health, Mental Health Recovery Services Board and three CDC to provide that focused effort on the street of people who could work with the chronically homeless down here in the downtown area to provide that service, to make those connections, to help people get off of the street. That was the program that he mentioned.
Well, when we do our budget, I need to be a little more specific. I need to carve out, I want to see something, because I'm not, you might see one person or two people. I'm just saying, there's no way in the world, I've been asking the same question for five years and it just keeps getting, well, it's not this one, he meant it, and no, no, he, and he basically said it was three CDC and we put some ARPA money. And my thought was the ARPA money was going to be zeroed in on some people that's walking around with the iPads that I can see between this area. That's what I thought would be included. And now I'm hearing we're going all the way out throughout Hamilton County and Wichita.
All the funding that we receive, and just to be very clear, we do not receive any funding from Strategies at this point. We received some funding from the Mental Health Board, which could be, I don't know if there's an opportunity that that is part of the conversation with Strategies. We directly work with the Mental Health Board on that funding. I don't know where the funds specifically come from that they use. The second question is geographic boundaries. We are talking specifically and focused specifically on the geographic boundaries of downtown. So from the riverfront up to Liberty Street, Eggleston over to Central. So that is what we are focused on. A by-name list of each and every individual that's down here. How can we quickly, as quickly as possible, move them into shelter or housing? And that's, that's our focus. I think that, you know, your request for, and what you want to see is more consistently, people in front of courthouse and in front of administration building. I think typically we have.
If you take a concentrated effort, if you do, I would be able to see a little more results. But when you start talking about all the way from the river to here and here, you might have one person, two persons, because it's a hard.
Right, I mean typically we have two individuals on recovery seven days a week, seven to nine P M.
Maybe it's not you, I need the transcript, because I am so confused about asking the same question for five years. And they keep telling me it's coming, they saying it's with you, you saying that you ain't with Strategies, they saying it's with mental health. So maybe it's not for your presentation, but I need to get the transcript, maybe you can give me something later and maybe meet with the gentleman and find out where did my ARPA money go that I voted on? Because I thought it was going toward additional to what you already do. I understand the hundred and twenty-five, we just voted on that. And I'm supportive of it and it, you know, you do a great job with the ambassadors. But that additional money that we were supposed to be voting on, and I don't have it in front of me today, so I can't really talk to you apples and apples, but I need to get it. What did that money go specifically to? And if three CDC was not involved in that, then that's a whole different conversation.
That, that money went primarily for shelter diversion. That's, that was for the county's shelter diversion program.
Well, where is the money for the streets? You told me it was coming.
There, no, this is funded through a separate program where there is, in fact, there are, in fact, people who are doing that outreach downtown. And we've been providing the stats to commissioners through regular reports on.
Yeah, outside of the stat, I need to know where the money went. Because this today is the same presentation, I mean, you gave me a new presentation, but we talking about the same money that we already had voted on, hundred and twenty-five thousand. Our money goes toward the ambassadors, the sweeping, the cleaning and putting, you know, the ones that have.
It goes with ambassador and outreach program that collectively goes into that.
How much is in outreach versus the other program you already got?
I, I mean, if we.
Is that broken out or is it just, because we were already paying one twenty-five without outreach program?
Yes, and additional funding that is being paid in is paid in through the Mental Health Board that is, we see is coming from the county as well. And that is hundred and, hundred and sixty-two thousand.
Yeah, that's a little different. So I just, if I can get some clarification, maybe I'll get that later. I don't think it's part of this particular presentation.
Okay.
Thank you.
First of all, thank you. Thank you for all you do. And so the numbers speak for themselves. When I was looking on, can you go to that budget? Part, I have a couple of comments. I noticed that the events have doubled in twenty twenty-five. If you could tell me to a hundred and forty-eight thousand, can you explain to me more about what the events are about?
Those are primarily events that are being done throughout the district. A lot of those are on Court Street, out in the section that is immediately closed down there between Vine and Walnut Street. Basically, this budget, we bring additional funds in on top of assessment to do additional programming. And that is one of the primary areas it's programmed. This kind of goes through this budget. We also do some downtown, you know, dazzles down at Fountain Square that comes through this budget, other events that just drive more people into different areas.
So for instance, like Taste of Cincinnati, would you have a booth or something there?
No, no.
No.
That would be totally done separately by the chamber.
Okay, okay. All right, let me ask a couple of questions and comments. Currently, there were sixteen clients that needed housing and so thirteen have been housed. That is astronomical. Housing, as we know, is so hard to get anyway. And then for you to have thirteen of them that were housed, kudos to you for that. I also noticed on the budget, the supporters, there's less contributions. Fifty thousand versus in two thousand and nineteen, it was a hundred and thirty-five. What do you think the cause of that is, why you're not having as many supporters or contribution?
Primarily that's driven by our increase in outreach. It's just kind of how it's allocated, that we have more people kind of individually donating to the outreach program that goes through the generosity five one three outreach contributions line as we do the DCI membership supporters contribution. So it's kind of a shift from doing more events into being more focused on our outreach program, because that was what we had seen as our highest.
Okay, great. And I know the Mental Health Board, they can make the decision of where they want their money to go. And so they decided you guys were a good group to do it. Do you work with Josh Springs at all?
We do.
Yes, we have before and part of the broader collaboration that we do with like this monthly system change meeting as well as participating in a few other meetings, whether that's us or G C B with generosity five one three. There's a lot of coordination amongst agencies, including Josh Spring and the Homeless Coalition.
Very good. And the fact that you implemented outreach coordinators, that's awesome. Considering your staff was low anyway, but you saw the prior priority of getting outreach coordinators. I have quite a few. Let's see. Now, your contracts, your cleaning and beautification contracts. Where does your money come from? Is that local, state or where's the money from the contracts come from?
It's primarily local, just additional partners in the downtown area. We have a couple of city contracts for smaller areas or projects, but also things like we have a contract with Sorda or Metro to clean up Government Square. So kind of if we have an area where a stakeholder or a company would like some additional services above what we can provide for the Improvement District, we have a contract in place to provide.
Okay, okay, very good. Now, you mentioned the hotline and I'm thinking a lot of people don't know about it. And I wrote a note, we could probably put it on our website, but I'm going to ask our administrator, is there a possibility that we could do a couple billboards downtown? I mean, everybody knows and you're thinking, well, we don't want to advertise that we have homeless, but when you drive around, you will see them. And just wondering for greater visual, if we could put up a couple billboards just to have what the hotline is, because everybody doesn't have a computer and get on the website and how we might possibly be able to do that. So we'll look at it and see. I know there is a young lady who stands right where we park every morning with her cardboard sign. And so now that I know the hotline number, and I'm always rushing, so I can't talk with her, but you might want to have an outreach worker come around here a little bit around ten, ten A M. or quarter to ten and, and just see what her needs are, that would be great. And so, and as it relates to Strategies and homelessness, I know he had said, Kevin had said that he could not spend the money on prevention, only on homelessness itself. And so that's an issue itself, because prevention, if we had more prevention, we wouldn't have as many people out there. But lastly, I just want to thank you guys for being on the street and doing what you do, making a difference in this county and in this downtown area. I have seen a difference, I still see homeless. We can't necessarily get to all of them, but the numbers are fewer than they were before. So thank you so much for what you do.
Thank you. And just to your comment on, you know, the billboards and people being aware of the hotline number, that's something that we're aware of and always continuing to work on. So we'd love to continue that conversation about how do we make sure that more people are aware of this program and are aware of how to get in touch with someone when there is a need. We did recently do a panel on immediate need really resources related to homelessness and had several partners come in and talk about shelter, housing, shower house was there, meals, things like that, and really reinforced how to empower people to take action when they see someone who is experiencing homelessness. So really driving home using that hotline number or alerting somebody to an individual so they can get connected to services. But any additional feedback on how we can continue to increase awareness on this program is welcome.
That would be great, and I'm thinking about the housing element. Do you work with Metropolitan Housing, houses thirteen that you have worked with?
We do, Laura could speak more eloquently to that, but CMHA is a partner in housing these individuals. So getting them connected to their programming and sign up for their vouchers is something that we have done.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Commissioner, if I could just real quick, since we've mentioned it several times, but if folks are watching, I think it's four nine eight six one nine two, I think is the, is the outreach number. So people are watching and you come across someone downtown who's looking like they need help, need assistance. I know from experience, these guys act very, very quickly to come bring help, so please use it.
And I will note, you can call or text that number. So if you're more comfortable with text, that, that's an option as well.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, we'll move on to our next item, fellowship summary presentation. Emily Dalton.
I think we may have Josh, who's gonna maybe tee this up, there, there he is, okay.
Good morning and thank you for giving us a few minutes just to provide a very quick update on our fellowship program. My name is Josh, I use C H N pronouns, I'm in the H R office, which is the administrates the program. So just as a quick reminder of what the program looks like, we invite an undergraduate or graduate student into the organization. They do various rotations throughout the, throughout various departments. They typically have a core curriculum that rotates them through four of our administrative departments and then based on the fellows' interests, they can elect other departments to rotate through. We are very excited that we are heading into our third iteration of the fellowship. This next fellow starts on Thursday, so we're very excited to have her join us. But as we continue to look at opportunities to evolve the program and enhance the program, we thought giving the current fellow an opportunity to share her experience and talk about some of the key projects and takeaways would be a good, a good kind of capstone to, to end her, to end her time with us. So with that, that's all I have to say, but I want to invite our twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five fellow, Emily Dalton.
Hello. Thank you for having me. As Josh said, my name is Emily. And so I have a presentation today that's just an overview of kind of some of the projects I've worked on over the past year as well as some of my key takeaways. And I will say before we get started, that it would be really hard to put everything I've worked on in each department into one slideshow for you guys. So I tried to keep it short and kind of just hit a few of the highlights during my time. So we can move to the, do I click it? Sorry. Okay. So I started in human resources and there I was able to work with the H R management team. And my main project was redesigning our exit interview survey and kind of the questions that go along with that to improve the quality of the feedback that we get from those interactions and those surveys. And then after that, I came down here to the sixth floor. And I first started with the budget office and I spent a couple of months here working with administration. Also, some of the re-entry program, five one three events, that type of thing. So I spent a couple of months down here. I was able to look at other budgets of cities and counties that were similar in size to ours and provide recommendations to Mr. Ludo and some of our assistant administrators as well. And then I also spent time with Bridget Doherty to compile and organize some articles related to the county's involvement with Paycor Stadium while I was on the sixth floor. And then, like I said, over the course of the year of fellowship, I got to participate in events with the re-entry program, addiction response, five one three bus, which I really enjoyed being able to firsthand see our outreach efforts and interacting with, you know, the citizens of the county. So that was a really good experience. In January, I headed to community planning and development. And during my time there, community planning was working on the Kenwood Area Transportation Study, which was really interesting for me to kind of just jump in on. And I got to go to a couple of the open houses and talk to people and get their opinions on what, what they were doing, what we were proposing. And then at the same time, community development was also working on preparing their consolidated plan for HUD. And so I got to sit in on those meetings, which was something that was really interesting to me. For the past two-ish months, I have been in environmental services. So there I've been able to learn a lot about air quality, which was not something that I was expecting when I took this fellowship, but it's actually been so interesting. And I've gotten to learn about a lot of the environmental policy and initiatives that Resource has going on. So that's been a very cool experience, there's some really good people over there. And then some of my key takeaways, cross-department exposure, being able to go around to each different department and see how, even though they're working with different focus areas and means, everyone in the county is working towards a greater goal of improving the lives of the people who live here, which has been something that's been really important for me to see, I believe. Public service and action. So this is kind of like I was talking about with the outreach efforts and community engagement and just being able to see how county, the county government is meeting people where they are and making sure that we're accessible is one of my biggest takeaways. Impact of local government. Impact of local government. This is really just being able to see how our decisions in the county level are improving the lives of, of people in tangible ways and how local government is where meaningful change begins. And then professional growth, I think that this has been a really good opportunity for me. I've been able to work with a lot of people. I've been able to focus on my research skills, communication. I graduated just a couple of weeks ago from the University of Cincinnati. So I've spent my whole senior year of college doing this and I am really grateful for this opportunity. I think it's a really good program. So I am really excited to have been able to do this for the last year. And I'm excited for the next fellow and to see the program, you know, continue to help students like me. That's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, this is super exciting. This was one of my initiatives and I want to thank my colleagues for supporting it. There is a fellowship program at the state and I was always impressed by it. And I said, wow, this would be great at the county level because most people do not know what does the county do? Because we're in so many different areas. And so I do want to thank HR, want to thank for bringing the vision to light and what you described is what we were looking for. But I do have a question for you. Was there any particular area that you were, you know, that you liked better? Or did it help you kind of?
Yeah, I, I don't know if I have a favorite necessarily, but I really liked my time in community planning and development. Just as I'm graduating from college and I'm thinking about, you know, different master's programs I might want to go into or continued education. And so I was definitely able to kind of see the work that they were doing there and consider a master's in community planning and kind of see the everyday work that they've done. So I think that would be like a really good example of, and I think that's what the program is meant to do, you know? Just allow me to see the different areas that, that's, work is going in on. Yeah.
And my other question is, when you came into the county, did you, was it different than you had expected? You know, because a lot of times people don't know the county deals with so many areas.
Yeah, I was definitely, I, I hadn't had exposure to county anything really before. I had an internship with city council. And so I knew, you know, there was city and county, but I didn't know how they interacted or like what, what differentiated them as much. But after this year, I'm really able to see like all of the things that go into, you know, like human resources is, is helping the employees who are helping all of the people. And like, it's, it's just been a really cool experience. So I, I've definitely learned a lot.
Awesome. Well, thank you. I'm super excited and to hear directly from you that this program is, is working. I'm thankful, that's all I have right now.
Okay, sounds good. So you're coming back to work for us or what? Possibly, huh? So you graduated. Congratulations. And what was your degree when you graduated?
Political science.
Oh, so you'll be sitting up here. Okay, and I really like the, the fellowship, I was thinking the fellowship and the internship. You stay in one office, but the fellowship, you go all over. And I'm hoping that we can do more of that. That, that is awesome. You can have a different eye than we have on it. And I'm a little boring, so I'm going to ask this question under human resources. You redesigned the county's exit interview to improve feedback. And I would just like to, to see what word, what questions you changed. Not to change anything that you did, but just to see how you looked at it a little differently than we do. So that's great. I'm excited about it. I'm glad that we did well with you and you did well with us and looking forward to seeing you again. So thank you so much. And thank you guys, HR. Yeah, so, okay, thank you.
I just want to say, I'm, I'm just so excited about this. And I just do want to thank the board because fellowship program, those are folks that, like yourself, senior year in college or maybe a year out of college. Then we also have an internship and I do want to thank our colleagues and Commissioner Dumas. You had even added to the internship, which we added or that people are changing careers. And we do have opportunity, you don't have to just be in college, but opportunities for people to intern with us and see what we do because they're changing careers as well. So I'm just, I'm just super excited how we're doing this. I don't think any other county's got anything going like we've got going. And HR, seal the deal with her. We gotta get her, get her in here doing something. Don't leave us. No, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have an executive session. I'm going to make a motion. I'm going to move to go into executive session pursuant to RC Section 121.22G2 to discuss the sale and acquisition of property.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you.